All right, so it's a beautiful night outside. We don't want to keep you any longer than we have to. Laura and I are presenting. Our board members are part of the community here, but certainly this is a community forum, and if there's questions or so, and you don't think we're going to lose our place, ask them. We also have a podium up here. If in fact you're a little longer-winded or have things that you want to share. There are a couple people in the community who do have things that they want to share, and we're certainly excited that they're here. So again, it's a beautiful night, but thank you all for coming in. So at this point, I'm just gonna...
You start.
Yeah, I'm just gonna start. So I'll turn it over toward me, and can I use this to click?
Why is it not...
What if I use this?
Remember I'm backwards? That's what's wrong.
She's left-handed on the mouse. All right. So what we want to share with you tonight, and everyone will receive a flyer in the mail as well, is our year in review for 1718. And what I'll start with are some of our student accomplishments that we're really, really proud of. Of course, whenever you see something good, there's always the chance that you've left a lot of people out, so we don't want to give the impression that this is all-inclusive or everything. And I would also suggest that if there are things that you wish that we had highlighted, that we have many other venues that we can highlight. So just email me, call me, tell me that you really think that we should highlight that and we missed it, and we're more than happy, happy to do that. So we're gonna go through the highlights for the year with our students, community involvement, our technology upgrades, technology upgrades, and then our facility upgrades as well. Tell me why. Oh, because you have to click on the right? You do it. All right. Fourth highest graduation rate in Western New York was noted in the Buffalo Evening News about a month or so ago. We're super proud of that fact. We attribute a lot of it to our after-school academic enhancement program, which is running 712 right now. Next year it'll run 68 and 912. And basically what that is, is any student who we feel has regressive effort, or whose grades are not up to snuff, has to come in, or they're monitored after school before they can get involved in anything as an after-school program. So we're really proud of this building for taking the run with that one, and we believe it's made a huge difference. It's certainly made a huge difference in our graduation rate with our special ed students as well. Ninety-six percent graduation rate for us is one student not graduating on time. So unless we can get to 100% with that one student, that's our goal for next year, is to be able to purport 100. And there is one school in Western New York who has 100, so we have a good challenge in mind. We were noted a year or so ago as having in the 7th Annual AP District Honor Roll. Basically what this means, and it was a challenge for me when I came in as a superintendent in 2013, was to offer programs to our upper-level students, because we didn't have but one or so AP exams. You don't necessarily have to have the course, but most schools will offer a course with Advanced Placement, because the Advanced Placement exam stands on its own, and it is an independent testing company. But this is, we're really, really proud of this, and basically what you had to do to get on this honor roll was to increase the number of Advanced Placement courses that you ran, and increase the number of students that took the courses, and also have a certain percentage of students score a good score. So we're really proud of being on this honor roll. This is the second time that the district has been in the honor roll in seven years. In terms of scholar athletes, and they made it much more complicated this year, in terms of 75% of our teams, we'd also like to see 100 on this one, getting a 90% GPA or higher. We are after 100% of our teams as scholar athletes. Most of our students who are honor roll, most of our students who are AP are also athletes. And so we're really proud of our kids. We're glad that they're involved. Unless you're really working somewhere within Eden or just outside of our own little hamlet, there isn't much to do besides be in an activity or a sport. We do consider ourselves the hub of the community, and so we spend an awful lot of effort trying to figure out what our students want to be involved in. So we're real proud of our students here. Catch Me If You Can was a lot of fun for our kids. We've had a musical at the high school. This particular one had students that were also a little bit younger in 7th and 8th grade. Our hope is next year with the 6th grade moving up, that we'll also have a 6th through 8th musical. When Mr. Vaughn was here, he had a 5-6 musical that may end up being more drama, more improv, more theater. But our kids certainly do have a lot of fun with this one, and I still to this day can't figure out how they memorize everything that they do. But we get a really great turnout. They did such a good job that Musical Kennies came. They have to come every single performance, and we were nominated for the Kennies, and so we're looking forward to that in the middle of May, and hope to come away with some really good awards. Elementary choral band and orchestra had a phenomenal year in terms of all county participants. These are our students that are at the elementary school, and these are our students who actually continued on through all county. We had more of them who qualified to go. Choral performances at the junior high and the senior high level, you can see that there's quite a number of students here who participated in either senior high all-state or junior high all-state, all-county, auditioned for NISMAs solos, and then also the Youth Choir for Niagara Buffalo. So we're really excited about what our students in music are doing across the board. The same thing holds true for band. You can see that's a number of students here that had NISMAs students or honor band for Buff State. And orchestra is the next slide as well. So we're really excited in this particular one of the number of students for Southtown's youth, and also our solos. In terms of technology, we've had a great run in the past couple of years with our technology department, having our kids do things that are above and beyond where we were a couple of years back. As you can see, these are some of our younger students here, not just our high school students that we're working with robotics. And then also on the bottom left-hand side is our Eden Chopper Club, which took second place, and they're showing this past competition. Last year they took first. These are coming up against adults. These, when you walk into this class, you will not see the teacher working on the bike, you will see the students working on the bike, because this is a student build for the chopper. Super proud of them. In terms of additional activities in our school, what you see here is a read-a-thon, getting our kids involved in reading, because we know that's so important intellectually. On the right-hand side, our students took state leadership conference and went, and actually I believe we had one qualify for national for FBLA. Mrs. Platts has certainly been a lead for Invention Convention, which came through to us from PTA a number of years ago. And then Ag in the classroom on the bottom right, what that one is showing you is us utilizing the trees that are between GLP and the junior, senior high school. And to, we pulled off nearly 700 gallons of sap from our maple trees, which we're believing, at least I'm being told by a couple people standing here, Peter and Laura, that's probably gonna bring us about 48 to 49 gallons of maple syrup. So how we're gonna use it, we don't know, because the school can't sell maple syrup, but we're super thrilled about being able to use our own property to create our own products, especially with maple syrup. Super ingenious. NISFA states, these are our sports. We had our diving, we had our, we had two diversions actually, and then our volleyball, which are champs. We've had other in the past of our NISFA states for other sports. Each year we have students that get Division 1 or 2 scholarships to school, and we also every year have had at least one student or one team go on to states. Unified bowling and also unified basketball are two of our proudest events in the past few years. We're really grateful to boosters for helping to fund our unified programs. These are our students that have special needs or challenges in some way, and what we do is we pair them up with a gen ed student who is not in that sport, and they just have the greatest time. And it really is one of those opportunities for us to come together as a community, and for parents to watch their kids play a sport that they might have felt that they never were gonna have a chance to see their student do, and win awards, and just really be an athlete. JV cheerleading also took in championships. The next one is our community service. We partnered with Senator Gallivan to warm up blanket drive for the kids at Oshai when the hospital first opened up, and helped them get to over 1,000 blankets, which we were super really proud of. Again, student council in the elementary schools really ran with it. And then some of our Rate or Respond Day programs on the right-hand side. And also here. And as I said earlier, there's so much more that we have not been able to put here, but if you watch us on Twitter, watch us on our website, you will see what we're able to accomplish, what our kids are able to accomplish with our staff. In the next slide, we talk about some to do with our, either our E-Rate projects, our capital upgrade products. It could be our capital project itself. As you know, our Wi-Fi connectivity was one of the most behind in the area. We will now have a 21st or 22nd century Wi-Fi connectivity throughout the district that we're really proud of. That should be finished by August or September of this coming school year. We can already see changes though, and differences with what we've been able to do with some of our grants. Super looking forward to having the servers upgraded this summer. What we were able to do with some money that the board pushed back into the students from our GEA funds, and also some Smart Schools bond, and also some really good pricing through Lucinda Karstedt's technology department, is to outfit our K8, also our pre-K. Our pre-K has smart tables. It's fun to watch the kids play on the smart tables. K2 are all mini iPads, and our Grade 3-8 are Chromebooks. And so it's been a really great learning, personalized learning opportunity for our students to have their own device that follows them throughout the day. And we're really grateful for the board for pushing some of that GEA money, and also our Smart Schools money from the governor toward this project. Transportation upgrades, I'm gonna let Laura talk about it, because this is her and Mary Banco, our head bus driver, that have really fielded all the work on this.
Thanks to the planning of the board, we were able to replace two large buses and add an additional large bus to the fleet. We were able to outfit all the buses with cameras for security and safety of the students. It also helps with student discipline. We can see what is happening on the buses. We can tell on some of the buses when the arm goes out. We can tell when the lights come on. So if there's a problem with the bus, or God forbid it should be an accident, we have a lot more information than we ever had before. We purchased new routing software with the movement of the 6th graders up to the middle school. We will be rerouting the district. This will give us 21st century routing software that will enable us to efficiently route the district.
So what happens now, especially in our bad weather days, when we get up into the town, Boston, Zener, Fettick, any of those roads, parents aren't, they just don't know where the bus is. It's running late. It makes sense that it's running late. They don't know if they missed the bus in the morning. They don't know if the bus already went by in the afternoon, and so they'll be able to plug in on their phones or on their computer and find just exactly where that bus is. What we also like about it too is that many of our parents don't want to send their student, their children out on a 200-foot driveway and have them stand at the end of the road. But we don't want to wait five minutes for a student to walk the 200 feet. So this will let them know that the bus is just down the road. They can send their child out to the bus, knowing that they're not standing there in weather that they're uncomfortable with, or not having a visual on their child.
And the new routing software called MyStop, that's a GPS software that will be added because of the routing software in the 1819 school year.
So is that routing software also the one that tells you diagnostically when there's something wrong? Do you wanna talk about that?
Yep. Well, I was, that's further.
Oh, she's gonna do that later. Okay. Next one. So in terms of facility upgrades, this has just been a super exciting and super exhausting year. We're in for some more fun this summer in terms of upgrades. Again, we're really grateful to our residents for supporting our last capital project. On the left-hand side, what those are, are new kindergarten classrooms up to code in terms of size. Our old kindergarten classrooms were about 800 square feet. Code requires 1,200. They're fun, they're colorful, and they allow for us to work with students in those classes and more of the center that kindergarten classes should be. On the front right in our signature building, which is the elementary school, which you can see there, if you haven't had a chance to walk it, please do, is the new handicap ramps leading up to the, leading up to the front doors, new stairs leading up to the front doors. If you were to go inside that door, you would find a new elevator that allows you to go up the stairs if you're on crutches or in a wheelchair. You'd also see that coming soon, that those foyer doors that have been there are now able to be secured and locked, so that we can buzz people in from the outside, but keep them in that foyer until they're purely vetted, that we can figure out where they need to go. And then if you are very familiar with the elementary school, you may have remembered that you could go in those front doors and turn directly to your right and go straight upstairs. You can no longer do that, so there's a wall there that keeps people in that foyer until we're pretty sure that they're safe. Bottom left-hand side is the new, newly decorated music suites at the junior, senior high school with acoustical panners. These colors that you see in terms of the maroon, the gray, the darker, darker gray-blue are our colors for Raiders. Beautiful. And then where Laura has her pointer are actual storage cabinets that pull out, and in there are all the music that they have had for the past 30, 40 years. Again, in our signature building in the bottom little, is the, bottom middle is the Eden Auditorium, almost ready for our Moving Up Day ceremonies. What's on the left-hand side is a new sound booth and handicap seating. The stage itself has been painted black. If you remember, it was white, and it showed an awful lot of sins, because it was so old. And then also air conditioning and HVAC, which would be really nice for our people when you're completely packed in there in June. And on the bottom right-hand side, what we talked about in terms of our referendum originally is our new community school fitness center. We're gonna be opening up this fitness center for our PE classes on Thursday. We're gonna be opening it up for staff to use on Monday. This will help us vet out anything that we've missed in terms of protocol, safety, and allow us to get beyond summer, where we have to do some more construction work in this building, and then in the fall it will open up to the community. Our hope is in that, opening it up to the fall in the community, that we will be able to work with an outside vendor that will help manage that site. So we're really excited about that. If after this you want to see it, I'm more than happy to have you walk through that fitness center, because it's in this building. And then I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Yep, you got two more.
Oh, I have two more. That's right. So yesterday we did a little tweaks on this one, because we found that I kept interrupting her, so I might as well keep it. In terms of staffing increases in this proposed budget, in this budget, our proposals are, an FTE is a full-time equivalent, so one full-time equivalent school resource officer. And Missy, I think later on you might want to say something about that. So before we turn it over to Laura, I'll go through these two slides, and then that might be a good time for you to talk. So this full-time equivalent on a school resource officer addresses some of the community concerns, people who have called either Missy or me, or spoken to Laura or other staff members about just, I think, the most recent shooting in Parkland, plus some of the other ones before that. And I think all of us, especially after Parkland, are just a little more in tune again each time there's that tragedy that occurs. The town of Eden has very graciously had conversations with us about some potential sharing. And then Senator Gallivan has committed $25,000 of bullet aid toward a school resource officer. This school resource officer would have an office in every building, and would be able to help us in our bus dismissals, our bus arrivals, our massive movements in with students, some of our more potential events when people are worried that they're hearing some rumors or things, and so we're pretty excited about that opportunity. That would be a deterrent. In terms of prevention, we know in all communities, and Eden is no different, that there are mental health issues that are also at work with some of our little, our little students, our little kids as well. And so a full-time equivalent social worker that would allow the one social worker that we have to either be secondary or elementary, and this person to, again, work the other piece of that. Two full-time middle school, high school monitors in this building, since we're moving 6th grade up here, the majority of our students will be in this building. What that will allow us to do is to make sure that we do segregate our younger students, which is our 6th grade students, from our older students, and make sure that we get everybody into class, checking the doors all through the day, because our kids are really creative about being able to jam a door open. And then a special ed teacher, basically this is not for extra students. What this is, is we have a group of students that are at the elementary school that span between 4th grade and 7th grade, and this would allow us to split that, to split that class and put our age-appropriate students in this building, so those that are moving on to 7th grade. In addition to that, we have always, every single year, some, a little bit of tweaks or additions or so, especially as the schedule starts to work out. What we're anticipating in this particular one, and some of it is unknown, because we do have 6th graders moving up into this building, is some additional needs in phys ed, some additional needs in business, music, art, and also technology. And then also, if you were to take a right out of this room and go toward what we fondly call the bookstore entrance, what you would see is going to happen by fall is the new secure entrance to this building. So no longer will people come to that door and buzz in at that door, because we don't have a visual on you. You buzz in, and then you're free to walk wherever you want to. What we'll have is a greeter and an attendance clerk for our students, and a greeter for our visitors at this bookstore door that will also be secure. We'll also have the school resource officer's office right there, and so we have a 1.0 high school attendance clerk, which is also our full-time greeter in there. Missy, does this would be a good time for you to talk about school resource if you want?
So I just wanted to, I guess, expand on, saying the information on the SRO, the school resource officers. It is something that our town is looking very hard to help secure within the school. We not only are appreciative of Senator Gallivan's donation of $25,000 towards the SRO, we are also aware of that, that that is only a one-year guarantee. And so one of the things that I've been working on along with some other supervisors in other towns, is to lobby our state assembly, as well as our state governor, to push for support of the Senate-passed school safety package, which basically there's really two items, the whole package is great, but there's two items that this district and the town are interested in most, as well as most other districts and municipalities. And that is the funding for all school districts. They have an SRO at $50,000 every year guaranteed, would be a state law, as well as the increase for the allowability of retired officers to make more than $30,000, to increase that to $50,000, so that you open up more availability of SRO officers within your town. One thing that we realize is important for the school and for the town is that we find an SRO officer that will work well with our students. And so we are looking for somebody that is part of our community, and a big piece of that is opening up the retirement, or allowing the retirement to be increased to the minimum or the maximum of $30,000 wages. So just to give everyone an idea, I mean, I highly ask for support of this budget to include the SRO officer. Safety is a number-one priority. It's a priority that not only is the responsibility of our town, but also of our school district. And so we will continue to work with the town board and the school district to make this possible. But we also need the support of not only the residents of this town, but of New York State in general. So I am meeting with, we have a meeting...
We have a meeting, and we, you have a meeting in Albany, and we have a meeting tomorrow night with the legislators as well.
So we have been working with the community on school safety issues, specifically around the school resource officer. We've been working with Selma and DPA Trust Office, and myself and three other town supervisors will be going down to Albany on May 14th and 15th to meet with various different offices to ask for the increase in funding to be done of the safety package, or pieces of that, to be passed before June 30th, so that the mandatory funding of $50,000 will be available at the school district this year. And then for some reason, we can't, our efforts fail this year, we will continue to push for it for next year, so it won't end.
We really appreciate that. Thank you. The sharing between the town and the school is something we're super proud of. We worked really, really hard, and this'll just be one more piece that makes sense, and it creates an efficiency and also a safety in terms of communication, so thank you very much.
Well, on to the fun stuff. Let's start talking numbers. Everybody loves numbers. Typically, people glaze over at this point. I understand. So our proposed budget amount is $30 million, $90,130. That's inclusive of a 2% levy increase. The 2% is above the tax cap calculation for this district for this year. So how are we spending the money? A three-part budget tells you whether it's capital. Capital is your buildings and grounds and your debt service. Your administrative component is the business office, the district office, and the administrators within the district and their secretarial staff. Program component, 74% of the funds that the district raises between all of its revenue sources is going towards program. That's putting resources in teachers' and students' hands to give them the best education So when we look at this, we're looking at our expenditures. General support is the administrative component, the buildings and grounds. It has a $405,000 increase. Over $300,000 of that increase is due to the fact that for the last decade, this district has generated its own electricity under a COGEN facility. The COGEN facility is aging, and it is no longer able to keep up with the electrical needs of the district. In February of this year, the Eden Elementary, the GLP, and the bus garage all went back on national grid. So the majority of the expenditure increase in the general support is that unknown of what our electrical costs are going to be. Instructional, this is where you want to see your money, $420,000 into the program for the students. Pupil transportation, .49%. The major factor for that is the increased cost to have a GPS MyStop software and devices on all the buses. What that will do is any parent can go out to their device, log in, and see where the bus is. The other neat feature is our bus mechanics, if they get a call from a bus driver and say the bus isn't acting right, the bus mechanics can log in and get a diagnostic right while the bus is on the road, so they may not have to drive out to say, "Well, you know, it's okay that your temperature's up a little, you have enough antifreeze in the bus," or they may say, "You need to pull over, we'll be right there." It helps them with that first initial diagnostic, so it's an exciting new tool for us in this district. We're moving on to the next century. Employee benefits, that's due to increases in the retirement systems, the FICA for additional salaries, and also the health insurance increases. Our debt service, well, you look at the debt service, and it's fairly level, but then inter-fund transfers is elevated. That's because of the accounting movements that occur to pay for the debt service. So those two combined, essentially the increase is due to the debt service for the new project. Debt service is your mortgage payment. Simply said, when the school does a capital project, we have a mortgage payment, same as you have in your home. It's a 15-year because of renovations, and so we have to pay that bond back to the people who loaned us the money, and that's what this is representative of. So we have a 3.7% increase in our expenditures, or a little over $1 million.
So can you, if you just stay there for a moment on the general support. So we talked about COGEN and electric, but what you didn't talk about was NICERTA grants or SMACs, so if you can come back to that. We haven't had a chance to take advantage of those, so if you could explain.
SMAC is a consortium that the district belongs to. We currently now purchase our natural gas from them. We will be moving our electricity over to them. What we do is, as a group of school municipal energy corporation, is what SMAC is. We purchase combined to get a lower price for the commodity. And then what will happen, which will be exciting, is for the first time in over a decade, the district will be able to get NICERTA grants. Our intent for the NICERTA grants is to put in LED lighting, just like you did in your home, to lower the cost of the electric that we're utilizing. So those will be some new great things. From time to time, they'll put out things that school districts can apply to, but if you're not on the grid and it's electrical, you're not eligible. So this will open up some new eligibilities for us. And another part of our problem is the COGEN, when it was purchased, it was through an energy performance contract, and it's nearing its end life cycle. And so that's why we are not looking to replace it. It is a technology that did not meet the needs in the past for most districts, so it's no longer being touted as the way to go. And with the increased technology in the classroom, the one-to-one devices, all that draws energy, so it would just be cost prohibitive for us to go on to another COGEN system.
So for now, it'll stay in this building only?
Correct.
And it'll be fine for a while?
It'll handle this building, but it can't handle all of the buildings any longer. So where does the money come from? Okay, so we talked about what we spend. So right now, state aid gives us a little under 40%, 39.99%. Federal aid gives us .01. What is the federal aid? That's our Medicaid dollars for our students that are getting related services that are handicapped and disabled. Our miscellaneous, that incorporates our sales tax and things like loss books and fees that parents might have to pay to the district. Inter-fund transfers and appropriated fund balance. Does anybody know what an appropriated fund balance is, who is not on the board? In essence, the money that we save in doing a good fiscal job, keeping our costs low in this year, allows us to have a surplus, because of course we don't know what all our expenses are. So that surplus, the board can say, "Let's lower next year's taxes by utilizing some of that surplus," called an appropriated fund balance, "to keep taxes low the next year." And then the Board of Education, we have reserves. We put savings aside for certain things. We put savings aside for certain things. The major use of reserves in this district, that's how we're purchasing our new buses. That's how we're getting our bus fleet into the 21st century. That's how we're getting it safe for our students, lowering our repair costs and moving things forward. So, 3% of the budget is what the Board of Education has authorized for use for lowering, again, taxes to the taxpayer. So, our property taxes still are 48% of the revenues in this district. Now, the School Boards Association is lobbying Albany that they should be paying 50%.
And there was a time when they paid Eden 50%?
There was a time when Eden received 50%, but due to the complex formulas, the not utilizing fully funding the foundation aid, Eden has gone from 50% down to 39.99% of state aid funding. So, even though we get increases annually from state aid, they're still not paying the share that school boards feels would be fair and appropriate across the state, so all students would be getting an equal public education.
So, I'm gonna put Laura on the spot. Would it be safe to say that most of the schools south of us are at 50% or higher in state aid?
A lot of them, yes.
Yes, okay, so, and you'll feel that difference. School districts that are at 50% are considered less affluent than Eden, but if you look north of Eden, they may be at 39%. I believe where I came from, Grand Island, was at 39%. Differences in terms of the number of businesses that they have?
Yes.
So, can you just put a little detail to what I just said?
Well, what happens is, the state looks at your property values, and it looks at, everybody fills, if you've ever done your own income tax, there's that little box in New York State income tax that asks you for the number of your school district. Very important, because when you put in the correct number, that's counted towards the formulas that generate our state aid. It creates what they call the combined wealth ratio. They look at the free and reduced lunch population of a district, they look at the income tax that is reported by a district, and then they look at the property values. So, if, for example, in a district that would have really high property values, for example, someplace that had a resort lake, they would have a higher property wealth than perhaps Eden would have, because a lot of ours is in agricultural. But if you have a few, because you don't have a large populace, and you have a few wealthy people in your area, that can skew your numbers and make you look wealthier than perhaps what our general population coming into the school is.
Correct.
So, they use all that to create the foundation aid formulas, and all the formulas to tell how much state aid we get. So, they say one is an average district, and I believe we're at a .7. So, it says that we're more wealthier than some of the districts that are further south of us, that perhaps don't have some of the dynamics that Eden has.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Yes.
Do you file a tax return without putting in your district number?
I haven't, I have a question. Are you talking in paper format or electronic?
Electronic or paper?
Paper, yes, because there's no one to reject it. Electronically, I believe that's probably a populated field. But the issue becomes, and I spent probably three days this summer going through a list of people that have changed, that might be wrong, the address doesn't make sense, because they put the wrong number in. It's just as bad as if you have the wrong number in than if you don't have any number. So, it is a huge task.
So, it can happen, but you have to go back and
You would imagine people of higher wealth would fight filed a card versus people
Correct. And they're probably having a paid provider, so, and you might, you're very right, somebody who's doing it like myself, on paper, because I refuse to put it online, might not fill in that school district code, and they have no way to go back to it. We don't get a list of those that didn't get them. We only have a list of the ones that they think might be wrong, that they
We have talked about that, finding a way to reach out to the taxpayers, residents, whatever, in this district, you know, making sure that they put that code in.
Can we put it in a newsletter?
Problem with, the income tax one, the preparers are usually pretty good when they go to a paid preparer. The issue that is more critical to our district is, we're going to be doing flyers and looking at other ways to try and entice people, because we are a proud community here in Eden, that if you cannot afford, and people will say, "I can afford to feed my child," but if you're below the limitations and you can sign up for a free or reduced lunch, you can increase the state aid of our district. You're doing more than just have, than just taking a handout. You're actually assisting our district, making us, if we can get to 30%, eligible for some grants that we currently are not eligible for.
So, I'd say since 2013, we've been able to raise that level from 19% to 24%. Am I right on my 24? That doesn't mean that we believe that 6% more or 5% more of our people are free and reduced eligible than they were five years ago. We just believe that more of them have been able to turn in their paperwork. But there are certain really good grants, like QZAB grants, where when you hit 30 and 33%, that could generate close to $1 million a year, I think, for us in terms of funding that we're really excited. But that is a goal that we keep working on, and we do have very proud people.
I just have a quick question. Can you utilize income surveys that are done in other ways?
So, like you're doing the income survey for the town?
Do a big income survey, try to get some grant funding. I mean, we were gonna specifically do certain locations, but we can do a town-wide income survey, are, do we utilize that?
No. We have to, it has to be, they base us on free and reduced lunch, they base us on things that they can access.
And within the survey?
What might help, and maybe we can talk later, is devising a question. Are you aware that if you meet eligibility criteria for a free and reduced lunch, you can help the school increase its funding?
And you can lower your taxes.
Yeah, I don't know the questions we can ask, because we're gonna do it for
What it might help us do, Missy, it might help us target certain areas within the district, so that, we can't continually put mail out across the district to all of our residents, but we might be able to target the Hamlet, or target East Eden, or target, you know, a certain streets, if in fact, we know that there's some comparable data coming in from the town. I think it could help.
Yeah. Knowledge never hurts us. So, now I want to talk about proposed revenues, and we're gonna go through this line by line, detail by detail. For the numbers people, the rest of you, I apologize, because I know I'm the only one really excited about numbers here. 2% increase in our property tax is $285,000. Remember, I talked to you that it's gonna, we're estimating $300,000 for the electrical increases, so we're not even at a 2% levy increase, although we're over the tax cap calculation, and we need a supermajority of 60% to do this. We're still not asking the taxpayers to cover 100% of even our electrical. State aid has come through this year. They've increased 6.63%, or $743,000. Our federal aid, federal aid is the Medicaid reimbursement dollars that we receive for students who get, they call them related services. They're for our special ed population that need enhanced medical care. It was decided years ago at the state level that, where are all these kids most of the day for 10 months? They're in school. Let's get the medical providers hooked up with the kids in the school system, and so we now receive Medicaid revenue. And that revenue doesn't come without a cost, we have to bill for it. Then we have miscellaneous, which includes sales tax and our books and things like that, our loss books. Well, last year, this year, we're currently not hitting last year's projections, so we had to tone that number back a little, so it's a little more realistic, so that what we want to count on for revenue, we don't want to have a shortfall. And then, our inter-fund transfer, that's an accounting transaction, like it is over on the expense side, is all an accounting transaction for how we do accounting records for our mortgage payments, our debt service. Our appropriated fund balance, that's the surplus from this year that the board is saying we can utilize to keep taxes a little lower next year. They've increased that by 13.12%. Our reserves, they've increased by 2.66%, still going into our savings to pay for our day-to-day operations, hoping that that will help keep our taxes lower. And again, a 3.7% increase, or a little over $1 million. So, what will you be asked, as a taxpayer of the Eden Central School District, to support or voice an opinion on? It's up to you whether you support it or deny it, but it's, we're gonna, first proposition will be, can we spend? I want to point that out. It's the expenses that you approve of $30,090,000. You're, the expenditures. It's not up to the taxpayers to decide anything more than, how much can we spend? Obviously, we have to have a balanced budget, so there's another side to it, but as a taxpayer, we're asking that you look at our expenditures, and are they reasonable in your eyes, and vote accordingly to that opinion. Proposition two, we've had savings over the years. We have money in, it's called a capital projects vehicle reserve, that the Board of Education has said, we can utilize $504,000 to continue replacing our buses. This is a cash replacement, saves us interest costs of having to go out and bond for our buses. And then, in the maintenance department, we're looking to buy a new mower, a new large mower for them. We have a lot of grass area here. That'll be $92,000, for a total of $596,000. We're asking for approval to expend this money that is already in our savings. We're not asking you to pay more in property taxes to pay for it, we're asking you to let us release the savings to purchase these much-needed items for the district.
The money is there.
Yes, the money is already in the savings account. And this is the day of the vote and the time. Does anyone have any questions for us?
Can you go over the procedure for anyone who can't vote that day?
Because you're gonna be in Albany, too. Yeah, I brought that date that you're gonna be in Albany, sure. Absentee ballot, do you want to give her the mic?
Barb can do it.
Absentee ballots? Oh, she's louder than I thought.
You can either stop in my office in the elementary schoolroom 219 and pick up an application, and you can fill it out there if you want, and I will hand you the ballot after looking it over, or you can write to me and say, mail me an application. Either way, I need the application first, unless you're permanently confined. After I look it over, I can hand or mail the ballot to the voter only, not to the voter's husband, wife, sister, brother, mother, father, only to the voter.
And when do they need to do that by?
And the, they can, if it's by mail, it has to be a week ahead of time, a week ahead of the budget vote. If you're coming in person, it has to be, you know, the day before at least, and if you're mailing it in, we have to have it by 5:00 PM, the day of the vote.
Other questions? Yes, Colleen.
I'm sorry, I can't answer my question. I know there's different aspects of savings, but what is our savings for Eden? What is our savings account?
How much cash is in this one?
So, you have a slide on that, can you back down?
I don't have a slide of what's the total. That was the other presentation. There's approximately $8 million in reserves for this district. That includes the fund balance of which some of we've appropriated.
Some of it we can touch, some of it we cannot. I think it's a great question that you're asking.
Yeah, I have a real
Some of it, like the capital reserves and the capital reserve equipment, require voter authorization. We have a repair reserve, which requires a public hearing and a repair need, safety or repair need, and the Board of Education, after a public hearing, can listen to the concerns, and then they can vote it. They're not all eligible to be used to support the budget.
ERS?
There is a retirement contribution reserve, which is for the support staff only. New York State does not have an avenue for school districts to save for our largest retirement costs of teachers' retirement service.
ABLR?
ABLR is the Employment Accrued Benefit Liability Reserve, and that reserve is for when someone retires from the district, it pays out their vacation and their sick time.
It doesn't have to come out of the fund balance?
Correct. And any district, which Eden is not one of which, but if a district were overfunded, it requires the state comptroller's permission to utilize. So, a lot of these reserves have a lot of restrictions, so that when the district sets them aside in savings, the community has a say when they utilize them.
Does that help you? Perfect. Other questions? Oh, come on, give Laura another one. Yes.
Can we use it for images lunch? If you guys aren't able to save it, it'll help the district. Can you add, even if you don't buy breakfast lunches?
That is already a plan that I have.
Smart, though.
It is, because if you're proud and you don't want your child to use it, if you still sign up for it, we get the benefit.
Unhappiness with, for food, because of some changes? I know firsthand how the number down, but even if you don't use it, you can help the district get a light
It's a nice clarifier.
That will be part of the promotion we'll be doing this year.
Could you guys speak to Paul and Cars' proposal for the district?
I've probably spent 40 hours on it in the past two weeks, so I'd be more than happy to do that. So, Mark Polancars put out his executive report. We did not know that it was coming. I did get some heads up that day, so I was able to hear on my computer his media announcement on the report, and able to pull out the report and take a look at it. I've been in contact with Erie County Association of School Boards and the superintendents from some of these other districts, just to hear their take on it. Certainly, what I would say to you, and the board members are here as well, is that if there was an outcry from our community that they wanted us to do a study, the Board of Education would certainly listen to its community members. What we know from taking a look at consolidation or sharing services across New York State is that both communities have to want to do it. So, both Board of Educations have to sign off on wanting to do a merger or consolidation study. Both communities have to do two votes of their public. One is a trial and one is a final. But Mr. Polancars' report, honestly, although it talks about consolidation, really wasn't about consolidation, it's about sharing services. And we've had some conversation with him, with our contingent, North Collins, to find out what exactly was the objective in that report. The objective is sharing services, and if you remember, a couple of years back, it hit the municipalities, and it also hit the districts, where we had to show a savings of 1%. And if we didn't show a savings of 1%, then there wasn't any rebate to the communities. We, I don't know what percentage of our sharing is, and I
We're working on calculating that number.
Right. I would tell you, it's well over 1%. We, well over 1%, but my understanding from Mr. Polancars is that this is an initiative by the governor to see even more sharing between districts. We are excited about the technology in this different district, because it will allow us to do some distance learning that we haven't been able to do in the past. We know that we have neighbors in terms of programs that would like to, and we would also like to tap our kids in from a technological perspective in terms of academic program. Right now, we share transportation, we share special ed services, we share athletics and sports, we share with BOSIs, we share with the municipalities, we
We share almost $3 million a year we utilize BOSIs for things that the district cannot afford to purchase on its own, and gets collective bargaining power. In other words, if we have a service, one of our services, we have what's called an applicant tracker service. We sign up to that, we get, not only do we get state aid to help reduce the cost of it, but us and many districts, enough so that when students are going through the teaching programs, they're referred to that website to look for jobs, rather than just going into the Buffalo News or online trying to find people. So, there are many services like that, that the district is currently involved
And we wholeheartedly agree with sharing the services. It's efficient, it's smart, it's good for communities. I don't, I think there's some confusion in that report of mixing sharing with consolidation. I don't know what formulas Mr. Polancars used to come up with the numbers that he did. I know it's a complex piece, when you're talking merger and consolidation. If we're talking straight sharing, that's a different piece. One thing we talked about tonight was the school resource officer. That's a sharing opportunity between the municipality and the school. We are 100% in agreement with that. I personally have not talked to Mr. Polancars. I have read his report. I look forward to speaking with him in the future about the report, to find out what formulas he has used for that. But again, if in fact, some of the numbers that he has used in terms of a 20% savings or an $8 million savings, that's not what he's speaking about in terms of sharing. He's speaking about a full merger and a consolidation, and that is a very complex and often community-dividing initiative. And that is a very complex and often community-dividing initiative. Did I answer your question?
Greg did answer that.
Okay. Yes.
Are you going to be having somebody go to the town hall meeting that Mr. Polenkar has offered up on May 7th at the North Collins Library on the consolidation issue?
So, the board and I will talk about that, to find out if in fact, we'll be represented at that meeting. Mr. Polenkar hasn't reached out to us personally, to find out who is coming. And we have not had an opportunity to get together, as me or the Board of Education, to see what our response to that will be. My understanding is, it just hit his website yesterday, even though that invitation did go out, not an invitation, that reservation of the different sites for the different schools went out prior to that. Okay? We personally were not notified.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What is his proposal to use the same tax dollars for? So, is he identifying cost savings? So, the county reimburses our community with sales tax dollars, right? So, can you go back to that slide that showed the board money function?
So, while Laura's looking for that slide, I would tell you that Stefan Mahalou has reached out to me today to be on our board agenda for the next board meeting, with something that he wants to talk about for about 10 minutes, but I haven't had a chance to look at it in detail to find out what that is. But I suspect that it falls along that same line. What I would say in the report that I saw is that, not in the report, but in his media presentation, Mr. Polenkar spoke about the money not necessarily going back to the taxpayers, but being used to add programs. In this particular case, the comparison that I saw in the report for Eden and North Collins was $177,000 difference in terms of central administration sharing. The questions that I have for him, when we do have a chance to meet, is, he made a comment in his media report that all of the districts that he mentioned, Olden, Akron, the Chigtwagas, Eden and North Collins, have central administrative staffs, such as business officials, assistant superintendents. I can assure you that there's no assistant superintendent in this district, as well as there is no business official in North Collins. We don't have a transportation director. North Collins doesn't either. They currently share with Lake Shore. And so, that's where we're not really sure, and would love to have a conversation to find out where exactly his formulas took him on that.
And some of that hides within the numbers. Every year, school districts present, it's called an ST3, it's our consolidated fiscal reports to New York State. And so, if you're looking at one section, and one district has certain staff that are doing things, for example, at North Collins, their treasurer is doing director of finance work, as well as their superintendent is doing part of it, because they're a smaller district. But a district they may compare us to, maybe they don't have some of the things that are being done in the business office that are being done in our districts, because we're smaller. We tend to call out, we tend to pick up extra work. We do things for buildings and grounds in the district, in the business office, that perhaps aren't done in a larger district. So, when you're just comparing numbers, no two districts' job descriptions are exactly the same. So, that leads to, how do you do the accounting for it? It's based on the job description, the accounting and the audit work is done that way. So, it's really hard to just look at numbers and say, one district is spending more than another, because there may be something else going on in that number, that a number doesn't show, but a job description does.
Okay. Did we answer your question? Glenn?
Yeah.
Pete?
So, and the property taxes up there...
You're right.
Is it the school taxes, or is it also, so we pay our property taxes, I pay school tax, I pay town tax, I pay...
This is only the...
Two different taxes.
This is only the school.
This is, what percentage of the school's total revenue comes from the property owners in the district?
And so, let's, a conversation that Missy and I have had, because the town has certainly been working really hard, and I see Mike Burns here as well, so thank you, in terms of their vision and their master planning for the town. 48% of the property, 48% of the school's...
Revenue.
Revenue comes from property taxes. If you add the number of people who are paying property taxes, theoretically, your taxes go down. When there's fewer people paying taxes, then they pay more. It's the same slice of the pie. It just depends on how many people are paying into that slice. Okay? If I were to stand on one intersection in Hamburg, I told Missy that's all I want, one intersection in Hamburg, right? The revenue that we could generate in terms of bringing down property taxes from CVS, a Walgreens, a Tim Hortons, and something else on the other corner, I don't remember what it is, would make a huge difference. But we don't have that. And so, Missy and her counsel have been working super hard to address that and see some growth in the community.
And you just eloquently described a levy for the school district, the total taxes is the levy. What you get in your tax bill is your division of that total levy. So, what is approved by the Board of Education in August is the total levy. What you get in your individual tax bill is your portion of that piece. If another house is built in Eden...
They get a portion of it.
They get a portion, and you pay a smaller portion. It's not like I get extra revenue. I don't get an extra, I'm just going to throw out $1,000, because there's a new house there. I don't get to move my levy up $1,000. I just divide that $1,000 that we receive from that person amongst all the other taxpayers.
So, we want houses and we want kids. Those two things. Did we answer your question?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Okay. Thank you all very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you all for coming. Appreciate it a lot.